Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We're ready to start our Prattville City Council Meeting for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2013. We ask that you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing by invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That is great. Oh gracious God, we come now as unglad as we know how. Lord, first, we want to say thank you for being so good to us. You blessed us, oh Lord, even in the midst of our wrongdoings and our sinful ways. And we thank you for that. We thank you for life, health, and strength, and we thank you for food, clothing, and shelter. We thank you, oh Lord, for the opportunity to live in a land where we can come to a governing assembly and take care of business without any hurt, harm, or danger. Now, Lord, bless those who are less fortunate than we are at this time. We are not selfish in our prayers. Those who are sick and shut in, those who are bereaved, be with them and comfort them. Be with our men and women, oh Lord, fighting all around the world. Protect them and comfort them and be with their families. Now, Lord, as we assemble here, be with each and every one of us and be with those who have come to listen. We pray, oh Lord, that things will be well with all of us. And when we leave, oh Lord, direct us safely to our destination. And we will give you the glory, we'll give you the honor, we'll give you the praise. Amen. Madam Clerk, may I call her off?
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Chambly.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
I call this Prattville City Council Meeting to order. Our character trait of no money is virtue. The more excellent evident in my life is I constantly do what is right. And that's something we all should strive to do in our imperfection, to do what's right. At this time, we will have comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. If you would like to speak on any item on tonight's agenda, please raise your hand. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Richard Ray is in the audience. He's the new Chamber President. Good to have him here. Mr. Ernie Baggett also, Mr. Baggett, EMA. Good to have you gentlemen with us. When the mayor comes up to give his report, he may want to bring you up also. Good to have you. Mayor?
Yes, sir. If you don't mind, I will take advantage of that situation in just a moment. But to start off, my mayor's report, I want to first touch base about our standards and pores rating. We just had a teleconference with them a couple of weeks ago. But anyway, Standard and Pores has issued the City of Prattville rating upgrade from A minus to an A on our general obligation debt and also on our general obligation refunding warrants. Their outlook on all the ratings shows the City of Prattville as being stable. This upgraded rating speaks to the credit wordedness of our city. S&amp;P's summary letter states the upgrade reflects the city's improved financial positioning following the implementation of improved budgeting practices and expenditures reduction. With that said, I'd like to invite Diane Steinheber to come up and give her report from Jackson and Thornton. And after that, I will pick up my mayor's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselors, I'm here representing Jackson Thornton this evening to present the audit report for the City of Prattville for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2012. At the March 26th work session, we had a comprehensive overview of the draft copy of the financial statements. Other than clerical corrections, there have been no revisions to the financial statements as overviewed at the work session meeting. So this evening, I'm just going to give you a brief summary of the audited financial statement. The financial statements beginning on page one include our independent auditor's report. The independent auditor's report is dated March 25, 2013, and will state for the year ended September 30, 2012, "Our firm is issuing an unqualified opinion on the financial statements based on our audit conducted in accordance with auditing standards. And those standards require that we plan and perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement." Paragraph one of the reports states that we did audit the financial statements that comprise the city's basic financial statements. These financial statements are the responsibility of city's management, and our responsibility is to express opinions on those financial statements based on our audit. And in paragraph three is the unqualified opinion that "In our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the city at September 30, 2012, and the changes in financial position for the year then ended in accordance with General Accepted Auditing Accounting Principles." Page 15 begins the basic financial statements with your statement of net assets. This is basically the statement that gives you the ability to assess your financial position as to whether it's improving or deteriorating. And as of September 30, 2012, the City of Prattville is reporting net assets of $2.1 million, which is an increase in net assets of approximately $10.6 million. This increase in net assets is shown on page 16. In the second year of reporting a positive trend in increasing net assets, the city reports total expenses of primary government of $31.8 million. These expenses were funded with program revenues totaling $16.5 million and general revenues totaling $25.9 million. The total sources of revenue of $42 million exceed total expenses of approximately $32 million, thereby increasing the net position by $10 million. This has moved the city from a negative net asset position in 2011 to a positive net asset position of $2.1 million. On that statement, you'll see your sales tax revenues under general revenues totaled approximately $22.4 million. This represents approximately 53% of all of your revenue sources. It's very similar to most Alabama municipalities, which are highly dependent on sales tax revenues to fund their expenses. In 2012, the city was able to improve the fund balance position as reported on the balance sheet by governmental funds, shown on page 17. You'll see total fund balance is $5.2 million. Of this fund balance total, a portion of that is assigned and committed, with committed fund balance for debt service of $2.5 million, and fund balance assigned to the self-insurance fund of $1.1 million, with unassigned fund balance position of $1 million. As the mayor reported on S&amp;P, S&amp;P looked at the fund balance reserves and your strength in improving your fund balance position in their rating report that was issued yesterday. Beginning in 2012, the city segregated the business type activities, which included sanitation and wastewater departments. Those departments are reported on pages 21 through 23. And on page 22, you will see that those departments combined had net income before transfers and capital contributions of $1.6 million. This net income supports, or will support, the city's ability to provide cash flow for debt service and capital improvement funding and reserves. The notes to the financial statement provide additional explanatory information, which begins on page 28. But of most importance, I direct your attention to pages 43 through 51. And this is where we detail the debt, long-term obligations of the city. On page 47, you will see your annual debt service requirements, and you'll see for 2013, our annual debt service requirement principal and interest totals $5.3 million. In addition, particular attention should be given to notes 10 and 11, which begin on page 52. These explain the city's obligation for pension costs and post-employment benefits other than pension costs. The actuarially computed unfunded liability for these employee benefits total $12.7 million and $2.9 million respectively. These unfunded obligations present a future challenge for the city and will be included as a liability on your statement of net assets, beginning the fiscal year ending September 30, 2015. Keep these in mind, because these annual debt service requirements, coupled with the future funding requirements for pension obligations, warrant that city management continue to monitor its reserves and further build a fund balance. On behalf of Jackson Thornton, I want to thank the mayor, the department heads, for working with us to obtain the information necessary to complete our work. Special appreciation to the individuals in the mayor's office, the city clerk's office, human resources, and the finance department. Without their professional assistance, we would have been unable to provide this comprehensive report. And, Mr. President, that concludes my presentation of the auditor's report for the City of Prattville.
Thank you, Diane. Does any council member have any questions for Ms. Steinheber at this time? We thank you. The report is looking good.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this time, Mayor, before you bring up anyone else, since we're speaking on that report, as I get older, I skip stuff, even with glasses on. We're going to go ahead and approve the minutes from the City Council Meeting of March 19 and the work session that we had concerning this audit. We have a motion to approve those minutes. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of approving those minutes signify by raising your right hand. Those minutes are approved. Thank you. Mayor, you may proceed.
Well, at this time, I'd like to bring Mr. Richard Ray up and allow him to have the microphone for just a moment. I figure it's important for you to hear that audit report, since you're working with the chamber in the City of Council.
Audit reports are good things to hear, especially one like that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, council. I see some friendly faces. I see some faces I don't know as well yet, but I look forward to spending time with you and getting to know you. Two quick things I would just comment on. First of all, I want to share with you briefly my background. I'm a native of Montgomery. I'm a product of a Togga County school system. Retiree from Alabama Gas with a 24-year career, and now have been fortunate enough to become the president of the chamber, for which I am very humbled and very honored. I look forward to working with all of you. But in particular, I want to mention the staff at the chamber and the great work they have done in this past year while they had an interim president and while they were in a period of transition. And I would encourage you as council members, Mr. Mayor, I know has already done that, and the citizens, when you get an opportunity to thank that staff for the tremendous work they've done down there over the past year. And secondly, I would tell you that our focus at the chamber will be to be an advocate and a voice for business in this city. Business in this city, whether it is a small business with just a few employees or a large corporation, are the things that drive this economy in this city. And we want to come alongside them and be an advocate for business. We want to be an advocate for this city and continue to work on quality of life in this city. We want to continue this progress we've made. We want Prattville to continue to be a place where it's a good place to live, to work, and to raise your family. Look forward to working with you, and I thank you for your time, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. And I do look forward to working with you. Matter of fact, my office has already contacted the chamber, and we're there in the process of setting up another tri-governmental meeting, hopefully in the next four to six months or something like that, that hopefully the city, Board of Education, and the county commissioners can all sit down again and see what kind of productive meeting we might have on that. With that said, I'm going to go back to my report, try to make it quick and simple. But going back to our S&amp;P report, during that teleconference that we had, it was also mentioned that our expenditures were down. But one of those expenditures that was also mentioned was that our fuel expenditures were down 4%. And, you know, and a lot of people, 4% might not sound like a lot, but I think when you really look into the fact that fuel costs have gone up steadily, to me, that simple 4% rings a very loud bell. But with that mentioned, I think because of the no idling policy that we have put in place here, I think that has been a big reason for us to see that 4% reduction in that. And one reason why I mention that, fuel savings, is because of the recent partnership that was mentioned with Target and the City of Prattville, which it, in my opinion, actually helps us cut out even more idling by some of our police officers. But this Target in Blue program allows us to establish a public safety annex within space that they have allocated for us, for our red and blue teams, the police and the fire department. They can go there and work on reports. Also, if some of these other buildings in that particular area happen to need bill-out requests or anything else, some of our personnel will already be out there in that area, so it actually cuts down on some of the driving time, which I think will also show up as another cost-saving measure. But the only expenditure to the City of Prattville for that is going to be a data line that we're installing at this time. It'll accommodate computers and phones for our employees. This space will be completely ready by next week is what the timeline we're expecting. But also, a little bit of additional good news. Saturday, April 6, we're going to have groundbreaking for our splash pad. I'm certain we all remember our splash pad contest, America's Favorite Park, summer of 2012. And I hope everybody can join me in Pratt Park. It's America's Favorite Park, this event, and I hope to see everybody there. Just another, touch on another great event that we have around Prattville. It's a little on the early side, but City Fest is scheduled for May 3rd and 4th. Never hurts to get a little extra, good news, a little extra any time we can. That, Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Does anyone have any questions for the mayor? Thank you.
Thank you.
We will proceed with our agenda for tonight. First of all, we're going to have a report from council on special committees. Counselor Striplin.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Brown.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Starnes.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Chambly.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Bowles.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Boone.
Yes, sir. The mayor did not mention, when he was talking about our groundbreaking this weekend, it will be at 11 o'clock. I would like to invite all the city employees. The public is invited. We'd like everyone to come out. A special thanks goes out to Teresa Lee, who has worked really hard with Leisure Services Committee on this and has spearheaded our public voting and all of our public interest and publicity on this project. So I'd really like to recognize her. Please come out Saturday morning, 11 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll begin with Resolution Number One, is to authorize the hiring of one plant operator trainee for the wastewater department, and an annual cost not to exceed $35,076. Counselor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas there's a need in the wastewater department to fill a vacancy for one full-time plant operator trainee, and whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville has implemented a hiring freeze, and whereas the annual cost of hiring one plant operator trainee will not exceed $35,076 for salary and benefits, and whereas this is a budgeted position in the wastewater department, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that up to $35,076 is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring one plant operator trainee. And said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2013 budget line items, wastewater enterprise fund, salaries and wages, workers' compensation, retirement, life insurance, health insurance, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the Human Resources Department is authorized to implement the hiring process as budgeted. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Second by Counselor Chambly. There'll be the end of discussion on this item. All in favor of this item signify by raising your right hand. And this item passes. Resolution Number Two is to declare Provision Video Systems a non-responsible bidder for bid number 013-004. Counselor Chambly, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas sealed bids were let for bid number 013-004 for one or more in-vehicle digital video rearview mirror systems or equivalent upgrade systems pursuant to the general competitive bid law, Sections 41-16-50, Code of Alabama, 1975. And whereas two bids were received, open and read in public on March 14, 2013, whereas Provision Video Systems was the lowest bidder, and whereas Chief of Police Mark Thompson recommends that the bid received from Provision Video Systems be rejected because of failure to meet the following bid requirements. There is no trade-in credit listed by Provision for the units to be traded in. The digital and audio recordings are not integrated into the mirror unit, rather in a separate module that would have to be mounted separately. The mirror unit is not equipped with a rearview camera requiring a separate mounted camera. There is not a pre-event feature in the Provision unit, therefore it would record continuously, which would most likely require a server for evidence storage due to the number of shifts they are utilized. Be it therefore resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that the bid received from Provision Video Systems on bid number 013-004 is hereby rejected. So move.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. There'll be the end of discussion on this item. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. This resolution passes. Number Three is an ordinance to declare 13 Digital Alley In-Vehicles Digital Video Rearview Mirror Systems surplus and to authorize trade-in to Digital Alley Incorporated. Counselor Starnes, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, as follows. That the following items are hereby declared surplus of the police department and are here to be removed from the inventory of said department. 13 Digital Alley In-Vehicle Digital Video Rearview Mirror Systems. Be it ordained that City Council instructs the mayor to trade in these systems as is to Digital Alley Incorporated for the trading value of $500 each for a total of $6,500 in conjunction with Resolution 2013, page blank. So move, Mr. President.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brown. This is an ordinance of permanent nature. In order to vote tonight, rules must be suspended. Do we have a motion to suspend? Do we have a second? Second by Counselor Chambly. All in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand. The rules have been suspended. This item is now open for discussion. Will be the end of discussion. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. This ordinance passes. Resolution Number Four is to award bid number 013-004 to Digital Alley Incorporated for the purchase of 17 in-vehicle digital video rearview mirror systems at a total cost not to exceed $82,835. Counselor Starnes, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville Police Department has a need to replace 17 in-vehicle digital video rearview mirror systems, and whereas four bids were let to the police department for said systems, and whereas two bids were received, and Digital Alley Incorporated was the lowest responsible bidder with a cost of $5,255 per system, and whereas there is a trade-in credit of $500 each on 13 out warranty systems pursuant to ordinance 2013, page blank. Whereas said in-vehicle digital video rearview mirror systems are a budgeted expense for the police department, now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby awards bid number 013-004 in the amount of $82,835 to Digital Alley Incorporated for 17 in-vehicle digital video rearview mirror systems, and said funds are approved and appropriated for the fiscal 2013 budget line item, police department equipment maintenance. So move, Mr. President.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Chambly. End of discussion on this item. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Resolution passes also. Number Five is an ordinance to declare 28 X 26 out-of-warranty tasers surplus and to authorize trade-in to Gulf State's distributors. Counselor Chambly, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, as follows. That the following items are hereby declared surplus of the police department and are to be removed from the inventory of said department. 28 X 26 tasers. Be it ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to trade in these tasers as is to Gulf State's distributors for the trading value of $135 each for a total of $3,780 in conjunction with Resolution 2013, page blank. So move, Mr. President.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
This item also is an ordinance. The rules must be suspended in order to be discussed tonight.
I move that we suspend the rules.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Sterns. All in favor, suspending the rules, raise your right hand. Rules have been suspended. This ordinance is now open for discussion. End of discussion. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. This ordinance passes. Item Number Seven is to authorize application for a CDBG planning grant benefiting Martin Luther King Jr. Dry College Heights Neighborhood. Counselor Boone, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville is eligible to submit an application for funding assistance made available under the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended through the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program administered by the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs. And whereas the City of Prattville is in need of planning activities that will set goals and objectives for the revitalization of the Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, College Heights Neighborhood. And whereas the City of Prattville has determined that development of such revitalization plan will provide planning activities necessary for future development of the City of Prattville's Martin Luther King Drive, College Heights Neighborhood. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville as follows. Section One, that the City of Prattville submits an FY 2013 CDBG planning fund application to the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs for funding assistance in the amount of $40,000 for development of a neighborhood revitalization plan. Section Two, that the City of Prattville commits $9,000 of in-kind match toward planning activities. Section Three, that Bill Gillespie Jr., in his capacity of mayor of the City of Prattville, is hereby authorized and directed to submit said application on behalf of the city and take other such actions as necessary to obtain the requested financial assistance. So move, Mr. President.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second by Counselor Bowles? Will be the end of discussion? All in favor signify by raising your right hand. This resolution passes. We're going to backtrack again. I don't know if it's the glasses or the papers just sticking a lot. But Resolution Number Six, to authorize, to award bid number 013-005 to Gulf State's distributors for the purchase of 28 X 26P model tasers at a total cost not to exceed $31,018.40. Counselor Chambly, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the police department has a need to replace out-of-warranty tasers, and whereas the police department has established a program to replace one-third of the out-of-warranty tasers on an annual basis, and whereas two bids were let for the police department for said tasers, and whereas two bids were received, and whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville recognizes that Gulf State's distributors has permitted a 3% preference as a resident bidder pursuant to Code Section 41-1650, State of Alabama, as amended, 1975. And whereas Gulf State's distributors is the lowest responsible bidder with a cost of $1,107.80 per taser, said cost includes a trade-in credit of $135 for out-of-warranty taser pursuant to ordinance 2013, page blank. And whereas said tasers are a budgeted expense for the police And whereas said tasers are a budgeted expense for the police department, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville hereby awards bid number zero-one-three dash zero-zero-five in the amount of thirty-one thousand eighteen dollars and forty cents to Gulf States distributors for twenty-eight X twenty-six P model tasers, and said funds are approved and appropriated from the FY two thousand and thirteen budget line item, police department equipment maintenance. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Bowles. There'll be the end of discussion on this item. All in favor, raise your right hand. This item passes also. Resolution number eight is to amend the FY two thousand thirteen budget to reflect insurance proceeds and to authorize the expenditure to replace light poles and repair lighting at Matt Gray Park at a cost not to exceed twenty-seven thousand three hundred seventy-two dollars. Council Boone, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville had damage to two light poles caused by a storm on December twenty-fifth, two thousand twelve, and whereas the city of Prattville deposited insurance proceeds on January eighteenth, two thousand thirteen, in the amount of twenty-nine thousand dollars for the two damaged light poles, and whereas the Leisure Services Department has a need to replace light poles and repair lighting at Matt Gray Park, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that the FY two thousand thirteen budget line item insurance proceeds is hereby increased by twenty-nine thousand dollars, that FY two thousand thirteen budget line item Leisure Services Department capital outlay is increased by twenty-seven thousand three hundred seventy-two dollars, and that FY two thousand thirteen Leisure Services equipment maintenance is increased by one thousand six hundred twenty-eight dollars. Be it further resolved, the city council of the city of Prattville, Alabama hereby approves the expenditures of up to twenty-seven thousand three hundred seventy-two dollars to Petty Line Construction Company Incorporated to install seven poles, four new lights, and transfer existing material to new poles at Matt Gray Park, and funds are hereby approved and appropriated from the FY two thousand thirteen budget line item Leisure Services Department capital outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Brown. There'll be the end of discussion. All in favor of this item signify by raising your right hand. This item passes also. Resolution number nine is to name voting delegate and alternates for the Alabama League of Municipalities Convention in Montgomery. Councilor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Alabama League of Municipalities will hold its annual convention in Montgomery, Alabama, May eighteenth through twenty, through twenty-first, two thousand thirteen, and whereas each member city is entitled to one voting delegate and both first and second alternate voting delegates to represent their city, and whereas it is the desire of the city of Prattville to name its delegates to ensure its voting participation at the annual convention business session, which will be held on May twentieth, two thousand thirteen, at three forty-five P.M. Be it therefore resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that the following are hereby elected as voting delegate and first and second alternates. Bill Gillespie Junior, voting delegate, Willie L. Wood Junior, first alternate, Albert Striplin, second alternate. Mr. President, I so move.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Bowles. There'll be the end of discussion on this item. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. And this resolution passes also. This exhausts our resolution, our agenda rather, for tonight. At this time, we would have comments from persons present. Anyone in the audience would like to speak on any item to this council that's not on tonight's agenda. If not, we have closing comments from Mayor.
I just want to say I thank you to Diane Stein, Diane Steinheber for the hard work that she has provided for the, for the city through Jackson Thornton, and also thank you to the council and all the department heads and city employees, because as I've mentioned before, you know, we are a mechanized, service-oriented organization, and without the hard work from everybody involved, we could not make it as well as we have to this point. But thank you.
Council Striplin.
I too offer my congratulations to all the city staff and department heads for a great audit. Thank you.
Council Brown.
I wanted to congratulate Kelly Cook's department on another successful Fountain City Arts Festival dinner and day in the park. It was a really great weekend and well done. And we have a street committee meeting next Tuesday, April the night, at three-thirty at the city hall annex. Thank you.
Council Starnes.
Yes, sir.
Council Chambers.
I too would like to add congratulations to Doug Mosley, the finance department, mayor, department heads, employees, in, in working hard to get us to the point of being able to have a upgrade in our credit rating. That is a major, major deal on this upcoming refinancing. It's kind of hard to know exactly how much money that saves you, but there's no doubt in my mind that it will save us millions of dollars in interest over the life of those loans. And not to say that it's over, though, we still have room, a lot of room to improve on our credit, credit rating. And I think if we continue doing what the mayor has started and the council working together and, and continue to build those reserves, those reserves are the key to it, we've got to get those reserves to continue to go in the direction that you all have already started, and I just, I really appreciate that. And in the end, it's going to really make us a lot more attractive when we do need to, to loan or borrow money and get a much favorable rate. So thank you.
Council Bowles.
Yes, sir. I would just like to compound what they're talking about on the audit. If you were here six years ago, when I went through my first one, wow. I sent out an email that said yay when I got it. It is unbelievable where the city has gone from when I first became a council member six years ago till today. And it's credited to a lot of hard work of the employees, and I know you all have sacrificed, and sacrificed, and sacrificed, as many, many families in America have done since oh-seven. It, it's been a, not just a regional, but a national event for everyone. I do appreciate y'all's hard work, and you're just diligent, keeping that attitude positive, keeping everything rolling positive. Appreciate the mayor to give us the leadership and the guidance to get us out of the hole that we were in. And just, it, it's quite amazing sitting in this seat, and I get to see it from a different angle than everybody else sees it, where we have gone in the last six years, to a point where I first got on here, I was having advice from my accountants and my attorneys to quit, because they thought we would never make it, to the point where we've actually started increasing our credit rating instead of decreasing our credit rating. It is absolutely amazing where the city has gone. So I just can't say enough thank you to all the employees and to the leadership of the mayor's office. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Boone.
Yes, sir. With that being said, let me take the opportunity to thank everyone, everyone, for what you do and what you have done, not only concerning this audit, but what you do for the city of Prattville daily. I want to especially thank Kelly and her crew and everyone else that helped with a successful North Island Park Community Fund Day. Behind that this year, the United Christian Church had an Easter egg hunt. They had about three hundred people there. And then they went down to Doster on Sunday morning and had another three to four hundred, gave out a lot of bicycles and gifts, and they are looking forward to partnering with the city of Prattville mayor and to do other things, positive things for this community. So thank you all for what you do. And if you look at the character trait of the month, again, it's virtue, the moral, excellent evident in our life, as we constantly do what is right. I changed the words a little bit so that all you have to do is do what's right, and all of these good things will follow. With that being said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Meeting is adjourned.
Sorry about getting you off, off track at the beginning a little late.
You know what threw me off? It was a number.